I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for our work session. And tonight, we have our two new councillor-elect, councillor-elect Barry to my left, the elect councillor Lenville, and councillor-elect Dunwell to the right of council president Akerball. And we're glad to have them joining us for our work session. And then, as you may have seen on the agenda, at 6:30, we will have our swearing-in ceremony and a little break with refreshments to celebrate our new city councillors. And then, we will start our work session, and we will be calling them councillors, not councillor-elect. So, welcome. We'll start with a review of agenda and items on consent. Does anyone have any comments about the order of agenda or items on consent? Any councillor concerns?
I was just going to say, I did get a question from councillor-elect Barry about the metro enhancement. And I think I sent you an email, so hopefully I answered your question. If not, Zo is going to cover it in work session.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. And also, before we start, I just wanted to say that, or just ask a question of the city attorney regarding our new councillors. They have both read the minutes and reviewed all the last meeting. And it's my understanding, they are then qualified to vote on the minutes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. So we'll now go into our pre-council work session. And we'll start with the staff report on an addendum to our community enhancement grant program.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I do not have a PowerPoint for you, as there's a lot of words in the intergovernmental agreement. So I want to provide just a little bit of background on our community enhancement program, and how it links to this new addendum, and what that is all about. This evening, the amendment to our intergovernmental agreement with Metro would be an amendment to the existing community enhancement program, IGA, or intergovernmental agreement, that accepts the community investment fees. So we'll talk about first, what is community enhancement, and then, community investment fees, and how they link together. We have had the community enhancement program in the city of Wilsonville for eight to 10 years now. And we've been able to accomplish a number of community programs. And the funds for this program come from having Republic Services in town. So for every $1 of one tonne of wet waste that's processed at Republic Services, we receive a dollar. That's funneled through Metro and comes to the city, that we can then reinvest in our community through the community enhancement program. And that program has a committee that stood up that two of you sit on. And then, it comes to council for the overall approval of how those funds are spent. In general, there are a few rules as to what qualifies. So a nonprofit, government, school district, those sorts of program applicants qualify. And they need to meet at least one of eight goals, which could be something to the effect of reducing the amount of toxicity or waste in the community, improving safety, benefiting youth, seniors, low-income persons, or underserved, enhancing the appearance or environmental quality of our community. So it is a pretty broad program, looking to how do we improve our community. That's our existing program. Metro has created a new program called the Community Investment Fee, or CIF, program. And I'm going to read this to you, because this is a new program to me as well. So this is an opt-in program. So the solid waste producers, or groups like Republic Services, can opt into this program. It's a goals-based tonnage allocation. And there are, it's a voluntary program, and they can pick one of two ways to move forward. So, one, the CIF, 50 cents per tonne on all waste, such as yard debris mixed with food waste received by the facility, or CIF of $1 per tonne of all types of waste received that are not subject already to the solid waste community enhancement fees. So that wet waste could fall within this. So Republic Services has opted to participate in this program, which means Metro has an agreement with them, and they've been collecting funds. Metro does not have another program at this time that allocates the funds back into the community. So what they've decided to do is bundle it, if you will, with the community enhancement program. So should we move forward with this agreement, we will receive new CIF funds that will be allocated with the CEP funds. So that will allow us to provide more funding to our community enhancement program. The community enhancement program cycle is open, accepting applications. So these new funds would be available to allocate in July, or for July, with this current cycle of applications. It is a pretty substantial amount. What Metro staff has told me is currently, they're receiving about $20,000 a quarter from this program. So we should be on track to receive up to another $80,000 a year. They have already been collecting it. So there's already $60,000 from 2022 that we could expect to receive. So the only stipulations are, that I can find in the very brief IGA, are that we do have to account for it separately. So it'll be its own line item. But the funds can be distributed to those same community enhancement dollars. We just can't mix them with community enhancement. We have to track them separately. But when we allocate them, they'll be from the same applications, if you will. They also cannot go to general government purposes. There are existing rules with community enhancement that wouldn't allow us to do that anyway. They allow for a small percentage to be used for the grant administration. But for this, so we wouldn't be using this for general government purposes anyway. And we must carry forward anything we don't spend. So it's just a different way of accounting for the funds. So what that would allow is us to increase the amount of impact we have with our community enhancement program by accepting these funds. The few things you should know is this is optional program that Republic Services can choose to opt out of. And should they leave the program, we just wouldn't receive those funds any longer. And at this time, this is where Metro is allocating the funds. But we do renew our IGAs every couple of years. So that could change at some point, too. So this is just where we are today. It's a lot of information. I couldn't figure out how to break that down into a PowerPoint. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And then, this will be on consent for you this evening.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I understand that we have to track these separately, and that you'll be reporting separately on them. But is it still possible for us to fund an individual project with monies from both funds, as long as we keep track of where this goes?
Yes.
Great way to sum up the biggest question.
And we'll try to do that in the easiest way possible, from the accounting standpoint.
Any other questions?
I think it's wonderful. I mean, I think, really, for the projects that we've been able to fund in the past, to have additional resources, I think we're very fortunate to be able to do that.
Our biggest opportunity, or one of the big opportunities, will be further publicity about the opportunities, so that councillors can help share the word, and all of our city boards and commissions. So it looks like we don't have any further questions on this. Thanks for the detailed packet. And that brings us to the item, the second item, on transportation planning training.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Amy Pepper. I'm the Development Engineering Manager for the city. I don't believe I've met all of you yet. So welcome, if you're new. Tonight, we have invited Scott Mansour and Jenna Bogert with DKAS and Associates to provide a brief presentation on the city's transportation planning process. We are getting ready to kick off an update to the Transportation Performance Report. So they will provide an overview of our transportation planning, and then spur some questions, or be available for any questions you have about transportation. And with that, I'll turn over to Scott and Jenna.
Thank you. And I'm Scott Mansour with DKAS Associates. I've been doing, kind of leading the city's transportation engineering since, I think, 1999. And I'm excited to see an all-female council. I think this is all my years. I don't recall ever having an all-female council. So congratulations. It's really exciting. So one of the things we like to do when we have new DRB members, or planning commissioners, or city councillors, is to give a little background on the city's transportation. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It looked fine on my end. Thank you. And one of the things we like to do is just provide a little background on, the city has a unique transportation impact study process that is applied to developments. And so just kind of give you a little bit of background. And as Amy mentioned, we'll be beginning, we're starting to update the city's transportation performance monitoring process. And Jenna will share a little bit about that. But it's a great time to get your concerns and questions about transportation, and make sure that as we go through this process, that we're answering your concerns, and making sure we have solutions for the things that you think are issues within the city when it comes to transportation. So I'll walk through the, kind of the history of the city's development, traffic impact studies, the components of the development traffic impact studies that we do. And then I'll pass it over to Jenna to discuss the performance monitoring update that we're going to be doing this year. So a little bit of background on the city's transportation impact studies. Back in the 90s, early 90s, all the transportation studies were led by developers. So developer would want to come into Wilsonville and do their work. They would hire a traffic engineer, and they'd do a traffic study. And unfortunately, those traffic, those traffic studies were really coming up with different results. And once the development was constructed, it wasn't representative of what the traffic study said. And so, at that time, the city council and the Public Works Department identified in engineering that they wanted one traffic engineer to, one firm, to kind of do, be a third party that wasn't represented by the developer to do the traffic studies. And so that's kind of how we got to where we are today. And that has really resulted in, you know, a higher level of confidence in the TIA findings. And Jen and I do a lot of work in a lot of other agencies. And one of the great things is even the public, when they know that the traffic study's been conducted by the city's traffic engineer, it just provides a little of comfort, knowing that they're not, it's not just a developer's traffic engineer that's saying what the developer wants them to. So DKAS was selected through a competitive process back in the 90, back in 1993, to conduct those. And we continue to do those today. And as I mentioned, we act as a third party. We're not, we're just representing the city. We're looking at the development, what's being proposed. We're looking at standard engineering practices. And we're applying that as we go through the traffic impact study. So the data, we go out and collect traffic counts, speed data, bicycle counts, pedestrian counts. And we don't just worry about traffic. We look at all modes of travel. And also, safety is very important. There's always a safety section when we evaluate the development, make sure can pedestrians connect from the sidewalk and walk to the front of the building? Are there danger issues or safety issues within the parking lot? And how trucks back up where pedestrians are going to be? So we don't just look at intersections. We don't just look at traffic movements. We look at all modes of travel. And we look at both operations and safety, especially access to new businesses. The traffic data that we collect, a lot of times, we'll set up video cameras or tubes. And we collect that data to know, how is the traffic operating today? And I'll talk a little bit more about the transportation models that we have, that will also track future traffic, and track the operations, and track the developments that have already been approved but haven't been constructed yet. And also, you know, the data also helps us monitor regional traffic. One of the things about Wilsonville is you have expansions and growth happening in Sherwood, and Washington County, and Clackamas County. And those regional decisions and development that's happening in areas outside of the city can actually affect your streets. And that's one of the reasons that we do the performance monitoring, performance monitoring study today, is one of the things happens, Washington County was creating a lot of growth, and improving a lot of development, and it was actually impacting day road and a lot of the streets in North Wilsonville. And that was resulting in the city having to pony up more money that they weren't expecting, to build improvements that weren't approved by the city of Wilsonville. And so that's one of the things we like to monitor, see how the growth is occurring, not just locally, but also regionally through the system. So some of the TI components, as I mentioned, we do our existing traffic counts. But also, Jenna creates a great model that we call the Stage Two Approved Traffic List. And so every time a development comes in and gets approved by the city, we then add that to our transportation model. And all the trips are tracked through the city's street system. And then, once that development's constructed, and that traffic exists, then we turn that zone off. So that's one of the nice things we do, is we, we're not just looking at what traffic is out there today. We're actually looking at all the approved developments within the city. We work hand-in-hand with Dan Pauly as those developments, they pull the permits, and the development is constructed, we then can just remove that from the traffic, because that traffic would exist at that time. So we also have, we look at, as a development comes in, we look at what trip generation, they'll give us a site plan. We'll look at the buildings, the development that's proposed, and we'll estimate the amount of traffic they're going to generate. Sometimes, example of like a Dutch Bros, when that came into Wilsonville, we knew that Dutch Bros isn't your typical type of coffee kiosk. And so we went and collected data at three other Dutch Bros, and made sure that as we looked at our, we didn't want their traffic backing up onto the public street. And so a lot of times, we'll collect actual data at similar uses, and that's the trip generation. We'll also look at distribution. We have models that look at the land uses within Wilsonville, and determine the traffic that's going to and from the development, where is it coming from? And so we'll determine those, the paths for the traffic that's going to be generated for that development. And then we'll apply, we use the Highway Capacity Manual, which is kind of an academic evaluation of intersections and roadway segments. And we'll use that to compare to the city's code requirements of Level Service D. And that's, I have a table later about Level Service and average delay per vehicle. So we take the data that's been collected, and we analyze that. And we, in our traffic impact study, the city's code has us evaluate the PM peak period, which is from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. I know councillor Akerball, in the Frog Pond meetings, you had kind of questioned that 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's something we're going to be talking to you more about as we go for the performance monitoring. We're collecting data all throughout the city. And that's one of the things we'll share with you. Have those trends changed? Is it now maybe 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., or is it later? So we'll be providing you data, not just in one location, but multiple locations, so that you can share that information. And if you feel that that's something that needs to be changed, it's something that you could move forward with. But right now, as we look at our traffic studies, our current code is the 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. peak hour. However, that's what the code says, but also, there's safety code. And so if we have a school that's coming in, and we know that the morning and afternoon peak periods are critical, we'll work with Amy and Zach, and we'll make sure that we're not just analyzing the 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., because it really isn't applicable to a high school or an elementary school when your kids are coming at 2:00 o'clock or 3:00 o'clock. And we actually do a safety analysis. It's exactly the same as our PM peak, but we want to make sure the peak trip generation for the actual use is being evaluated. So we, councillor Akerball, in that example, there are uses where we know that it's not 4:00 to 6:00, and we analyze something outside of that. And we use the safety analysis, safety portion of your code to require that of development. And so then, we'll take that, and we'll analyze the PM peak period, or the peak period of that development. And we add the stage two traffic. We also have a travel demand model that looked, that basically assumes the future. It's got future traffic from Frog Pond and other commercial development that's assumed by Metro. And we use that model to also estimate our future growth, kind of an annual growth that we also apply as we look at our traffic impact studies. And so once we include all that traffic, then we evaluate our intersection, and we compare it to your city standard. And right now, your city standard is Level Service D. And for example, for a signalized intersection, if you take, I'm just going to give you an example, Wilsonville Road and Boons Ferry Road, you take the peak hour between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., and then you take all the traffic that's using all the movements. And Level Service D would mean, the worst case would be an average delay per vehicle of 55 seconds per vehicle. And that would be Level Service D. And if you have greater than 55 seconds per vehicle, so you could have one movement, like a left turn, that you're progressing traffic on Wilsonville Road. Maybe your delay per vehicle is actually 30 seconds on Wilsonville Road, but on Boons Ferry, it might be a minute and a half. It could be 90 seconds. But as long as your average delay per vehicle is under that 55 seconds, then you operate Level Service D. Level Service is similar to the report card of grades. You know, A means really low delay, everything's working really well. As you start getting to Level Service E, Level Service F, that's when you start seeing significant congestion. Yes, Mayor?
Thank you. I heard you say it's similar to report cards, but I've also, I think we've talked about, it's not like a report card, because D is our chosen level. So I never said to my kids, "Go ahead, D is fine."
Yeah, absolutely. I've never said that either.
But one parent might say, "At least you passed."
Yeah. But we, so, so can you, and one other question, PMP, remind me what that acronym?
Sorry, PMP, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, PMP is the Evening Peak Hour.
Oh, PMP.
Yeah, PMP, sorry. It's the Evening Peak Hour from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Okay, PMP. Okay, so, but the really, in all seriousness, we, we have discussed that we are quite satisfied with Level D, right?
Well, the implications of having a higher level of service would just make the system a lot more expensive. So I think we've settled on D as acceptable for the community, which is, I think, pretty much the industry standard.
Yes.
But it causes a lot of confusion. So each time that's brought up in meetings, and we talk about D, it gets people excited. So that's why when we heard it was like a report card, I just had to stop the conversation for a minute.
It makes sense in my head, but I understand what you're saying. That the, that I-
Negative connotation if you compare it to a report card.
It's hard to sell it as good.
Yes.
Unless it's a calculus class.
A lot of rural, a lot of rural communities would have a Level Service A or B. A lot of rural, a lot of rural communities would have a level service A or B where they have various, because their, their threshold for what is acceptable for delays is significantly less. So if you're in a rural community, probably your level service A would be acceptable and wouldn't be as expensive. But the more congestion and the more, you know, the bigger your city grows, the more costly it is to try and.
Is that because we'd have to put in more signals?
More lanes.
Capacity, yeah.
Yep. And one, and one of the things we've learned too is the bigger, the more lanes you build and the, the faster the traffic grows, then the safety is impacted. And so there is, one of the challenges, if you were to switch to level service C, it might mean traffic's going to move a lot faster, doesn't necessarily mean your transportation system's going to be safer.
Well, I just, I just want to be clear that we have chosen level D. So it is the city. I mean, if it gets changed, it is us that.
Right, but we've been, we chose it some time ago and, and if we, if we want to try to go for C, we have to figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah, I, and I guess I've asked the question before and I think the answer is money. The answer is to, to the change is money, but I think.
But it's money on both sides. It's not just money on the city side. It's if you're trying to be, attract industry into your community and you tell them that you have to get this intersection up to a level C, it's putting more money on that business to come to our community when everybody around us is level D.
The only thing is I, I, I don't know how much money that really is. You know, I know, I hear that it's expensive, but.
Well, it really is about adding additional capacity and it does get back to the safety factor too. So if you think of like Los Angeles, for example, with their myriad freeway, I mean, I don't think anybody would say that LA is a safe city to drive in.
Right.
And they're probably at a level D as well.
Yeah. Metro recently approved a level service E slash F. They allow, actually, I think now it's actually FF, they allow level service F in the peak period.
And I think the public policy behind that is to get people to stop driving.
Correct.
Or drive less.
Yes.
During PM peak hours anyway.
Yeah, during the peak periods.
And the probably, it would be, I know traffic signals can be, I mean, we heard 500,000 ones and they could last 20 years or maybe it's one and a half million. It's a lot of money, but probably the most expensive part of it would be land acquisition.
Correct.
And to add more lanes.
Yes, right away.
Well, then, then you think about the maintenance aspects too. You have to maintain more asphalt.
Correct.
It just, it spirals.
Is level D aligned to other metropolitan suburbs on this size?
Yes. Yeah, I'd say the majority of them. There's some that are level service E, but I'd say the majority are level service D and some are, a few are level service E.
Just for perspective, the intersection where you're leaving Fred Meyer and you're heading south to get on I-5, what's the intersection rating there?
So is it Boons Ferry and?
Wilsonville Road.
Wilsonville Road? Yeah, that's level service D.
Unless there's a wreck on I-5, then it's whatever's after F.
That is a great point. Because one of the things you have to understand too is I-5, right at the Boone Bridge, is at capacity, it's over capacity. And so when there's an incident or that is over capacity, it's, it's spilling back and impacting the city streets. And ODOT has identified and is in, in the process of evaluating that and looking to improve that. But until I-5 southbound is fixed, you're going to continue to see impacts. If you, if we look at Boons Ferry, it works just fine when there's not an incident. But in the time there's incident and traffic backs up onto Wilsonville Road, it creates significantly higher delays than the level service D, which is your standard. But there's nothing we can do on the city's transportation system to make it better. Right. So, and I was just going to say, one other thing about, whenever, once a development comes in and we do our traffic study, if they don't meet the level service D standard, then we make recommendations for improvements that they, they're required to meet that. And we make those recommendations and they're required to construct that. And that's.
Has that happened in Wilsonville?
Yes, all the time. Wilson, Boons Ferry or Fred Meyer, they did, they constructed a lot of that infrastructure adjacent on, on Boons Ferry Road and Wilson Road and put in a lot of the money towards the interchange improvements that occurred.
As part of our concurrency requirement.
Correct.
We have a question from council president Akervall. Comment?
Thank you. I think this was really, oh, am I on? I don't know. But this was kind of in relation to the mayor's comment about the A, B, C, D. So, but your chart here, which is very helpful, also has the average delay. So if we focused on the, the seconds delay instead of the, the grade, the letter grade, right? Could you help put that into context for us? Like I know that not all of these intersections are traffic light intersections too, right? But, but like what would a traffic light, how, how, if you had to wait, you know, like how long, how long is 35 seconds? How long is 55 seconds? How long are most traffic lights? Are we waiting for one light cycle, two light cycles? You know what I mean? Can you help put that into context?
Yeah, I mean, usually your level service D means that you're not waiting at a light through multiple cycles.
Right.
Once you've stopped, through, before it cycles through, you've made it through. When you start seeing, it's taking you two to three cycles to get through, that's when you're going to start seeing level service E, level, I'm sorry, level service E or F.
So the D still means that we're making it through in the light cycle which you arrive at the intersection.
Yeah, I mean, you might, if you're like the very end and there is a chance. Also, you have to remember there's, when there's emergency vehicles or buses can preempt it and skip cycles, but on average, that's correct.
It doesn't really factor in driver behavior, people that are on their cell phones and doing other things instead of paying attention.
That's correct.
We don't have any of that here.
No, not, not in Wilsonville.
Thank you.
So Jenna.
Yeah, so I'm going to shift gears a little bit and talk about the performance monitoring report that Amy mentioned earlier. So this is a report that the city updates every two to four years and it, it's not led by development. So this is something that the city does on their own to track the, the performance of the transportation system in Wilsonville. And so a lot of, the TSP has a couple of goals in it. You can see them there in the table, safety, connected and accessible transportation system. The city wants to have functional and reliable transportation system. And so are we making progress towards those goals? And that's the, that's the question that the performance monitoring report aims to answer. And so we collect data for different metrics. So we will pull crash data, we'll pull volume data for Peds, bikes, vehicles, travel times. We'll take a look at travel times on key corridors in the city. We'll take a look at transit ridership and, and other, other data. We'll pull as much data as we can and, and compare it to data over the years. And are we, are we improving things? Are we actually achieving, you know, the TSP goals that, that we want to achieve? So the last time we reported, updated this report was in 2020 and we're about to kick off another update for this year. And so like Scott said, another benefit of this report is it helps us track any changes that regional development or regional changes have on city Wilsonville streets as well. That's kind of the.
And I was just going to say that Jenna mentioned the TSP, that stands for Transportation System Plan. And the city typically updates their transportation system plan about every five years. And what that transportation system plan does is it looks at the future growth of the city. It looks out 20 years and it looks at the, how many houses are going to be built in Frog Pond and Ville La Bois and how much commercial is going to be built in town center. And it takes all that traffic and evaluates it. And then we look out 20 years and that way we can help Zach and Amy estimate what, what infrastructure is going to be needed to maintain that level service D. And the city manager Costco mentioned, that's one of the things, if you go to level service C, you now have to add more capacity, which adds more infrastructure that needs to be built to, to support that. So that's what that transportation system plan is. And, and that's what identifies the, the high priority projects on the transportation system that need to be built to support that future, future development, which will come down to the CIP and what projects need to be built over the next five years, all the way to 20 years.
Yeah, so we've identified these measures and metrics that relate to each of the goals to, to help us track, you know, from year to year or from report update to report update. Are things improving? Are we reducing crashes? Are we making the bike network more connected and more accessible, things like that? So that's the goal of the report. And I guess, you know, on the next slide, we, what we really want to ask you too is, are there concerns, transportation concerns that you have that you would like us to take a look into or evaluate as part of this update process? We're just kind of getting into the start of it and it'd be a great time to kind of focus our efforts on issues that you guys care about.
Let's see, we have a comment or question from council, council elect Dunwell.
Thank you. I do have a comment and it's tied into a question. So the, the entire metro area is growing. You spoke earlier about the growth in Sherwood and, and as every, you know, most commuters are looking for the easiest and the fastest way to get home, particularly when I-5 is backed up. We can be significantly, Wilsonville can be significantly impacted by growth in some of the other outlying communities. Can you explain to me what type of partnership, number one, that we have or conversations or communication we have with some of these metro areas as they're growing? And also, how do you build that into your modeling for your, your TSP?
Yeah. I think I can handle part of that, but I might need to defer to city staff, I think, on maybe work with other agencies. But when we do our travel demand model that I talked a little bit about, it actually isn't just, just Wilsonville. Wilsonville, we work with city staff and make sure that all the land use assumptions for, for the next 20 years are approved. But that same process is happening in Sherwood and that is same in Washington County and rural areas. So that travel and model is really looking at all the traffic within the region. But when there, Basalt Creek or there's maybe an agency that's looking to make a big decision that, that's going to change, typically there's a transportation study that's, that's conducted and there's stakeholders from the city and other agencies around that would be affected to be able to review the materials and provide feedback and to be able to, to come back to the council and share what they're finding and to be able to provide feedback to Sherwood or Washington County. And that's similar to what happened through the Basalt Creek process.
I was going to say, that would be the model I would point to because that was multi-jurisdictional.
Yeah.
Washington County, Clackamas County.
Walton.
Yeah, we had a lot of people involved in that and it was a long, pretty long process.
What about also the regional transportation plan that we're working on right now?
We're, we're all tied into the metro model because all land use and transportation goes through metro. So there is a lot of discussion and amongst cities and counties at all those metro areas.
But I did want to say one more thing about, that's a good point that you brought up. And when we think about the 65th Avenue interchange and we read in our, let's see, we got it, when we produced the Frog Pond master plan, we got a response back, or a draft, I guess. We got a response back from Clackamas County that talked about some of the traffic impacts they saw. So they were just kind of outlining those.
Right.
And they did note that the 65th Avenue intersection there is identified in their capital improvement plan. They don't have any funding for it and they, they noted that we have 500,000. And so, and, and people ask us about it. And so we don't have, you know, we can't make them build that, but we work with them and, and they're just, you know, we just keep trying to collaborate. Do you have anything to add to how?
That, that intersection has been a problem for, I mean, it's just.
As an example.
It's a horrible design. But yeah, so the more cars you put on the road, the more concerned that you're going to have accidents and stuff. And I, I've seen semi trucks in the ditch.
We have to advocate for that.
Yeah, we have with Clackamas County and Washington County is also involved in those discussions. So it really is just a question of funding. And unlike Washington County who has a dedicated fee for transportation improvement, Clackamas County doesn't have such a thing. The one in Washington County is a property tax one. And for some reason, Clackamas County is precluded from doing that, either by its charter or from some state law that was put into effect.
Go ahead.
I did have one more question. When traffic is congested and there's an accident or there's an event on the highway, do you take into account Waze and Google Maps and all of the alternate pathways that may not necessarily make sense logically to get individuals off the highway when you're doing these studies?
To, I mean, for, most of our transportation studies are for typical conditions. And some of you might say, well, typical conditions on I-5 is every day. It's getting, it's getting, the more traffic is on I-5, the more problems we're going to have, especially when it starts hitting capacity. But yes, the, the travel demand model that we use, it looks at, it basically is a gravity model that's similar to water. It's, traffic is going to travel in the path of least resistance. And that's one of the things that we, we want to make sure and we protect and we build our roads in a way that you don't have significant cut through traffic happening in neighborhoods. And that's some of the, your city engineers does a great job making sure that based on the design and how, how the streets are implemented in neighborhoods, that those types of things don't happen. But yes, when it comes to collectors and arterials, we are looking at kind of the rerouting of traffic and how things change as, as delay and congestion occurs.
It kind of comes out on the backend, right? So like if, how many days do you do traffic counts for your PM peak model?
Yeah, usually, I mean, we have a lot of different data, years of data and a lot of our new data sources, we can go and pull traffic data from any day, pedestrian, bike.
Right.
That's one of the great things about cell phones is we can now pull data from just about any day. So we, we can compare that to.
Average over time.
Correct, yes.
So you're going to capture the bad situations on I-5 and people diverting, you know, based on ways and all that stuff.
Yes.
So I think it's all captured in the model.
That's correct.
Go ahead. Well, thank you for the presentation and thank you also for your comments about kind of looking at that PM peak and kind of assessing if the four to six makes sense and just seeing what you find out there.
Yes.
And where, you know, I, I wonder too, like is it, is it, do we feel more pressure on streets that are close to I-5 versus further away? You know, is that where we see it creep earlier or something? You know, too, I wouldn't be surprised if something like that happened. I don't know. But it'll be really interesting to see what you find there. And I wonder, one question that came to mind, you know, so I hear you saying that you're estimating the traffic that will be generated, you're even taking into account permits that haven't even been built yet, right? So, so you're doing all of these things, but is, in the process, is there also a period where you kind of shore things up and, and assess how, how close the model was to what was, you know, what actually materialized and then maybe retrain the model?
Yes.
What does that look like?
Yeah, and we, and it's kind of a continued process. Each time there's a new development, we collect new counts and we, and we compare. I'll, I'll give you an example. I worked on the Costco development, Argyle Square, and we made all kinds of estimates and Costco came in and was saying that we were way overestimating traffic and made a bunch of complaints. And so the community development director at that time, we went out and did counts and our, our estimates for how much traffic was going to be generated from Target and all those, we were within 3% of our estimate. We were 3% over, but we definitely don't want to underestimate. And so our tools always shoot for a slight overestimation. But we do a lot of before-after studies where we go back and we, we have our estimates and then we update our models continually with that updated traffic.
So how often does that happen, the, the retraining of the models?
Well, I mean, for example, with the performance monitoring, we collect data all throughout the city. So every two years, we're updating all the data in our models. And then every time we have a development, we collect 10 counts, we'll update that and we have a lot, we have new data now that we can pretty much pull at any time and, and look and see how things are comparing.
Okay, so the accuracy really should only just be getting better and better.
Getting better and better with the tools that we have.
Thank you.
Yes.
One thing that comes to mind that I'm sure is in this, you're asking us what concerns do we want to have addressed? When we hear about certain neighbors or of the impression that there's a speeding zone outside their house or down the street or something, I know the city responds to it a lot and goes out and tests it and there's that occasional speeder, or are there a lot of speeders? So how does that work? Does that kind of thing fit into this?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, oh, is Zach still here? But I remember we got a complaint recently. What was, what was the speed? 14. So anyway, some, some of the neighbors complained and said there was really horrible speeding and Zach went out and collected a count and that the speed was 14 miles per hour. So it was just really low. It was exactly what we, we knew it was going to be low. But, so in the old days, we had to go and actually put down counters and collect. If you got a complaint, you had to go collect data and then determine, is there a speeding problem or not? Now we have data that we can just pull. I can go in pretty much any street in, in Wilsonville and pull speed data.
That's from cellphone data?
Yes, cellphone data, yeah.
We also have a speed trailer, which you're aware of, Mayor. We have an internal traffic safety team that has different disciplines that look, and it's sometimes it's, most times it's just a perception of speeding problem. But there are some times where there's clear vision issues, things that we absolutely can't address.
Yes.
But I would say the, the majority of the complaints we get are, we think we have a speeding problem or we're certain we do, but there really isn't a speeding problem.
Correct. But in neighborhoods, a lot of times they'll see that one, one person drive by their house going too fast. But, but it's just a, it's one, one data point versus the majority of the traffic is going slow and that's where a lot, I think there are, there is some, you know, concern with, when you get a lot of those complaints. But a lot of times when we actually do the studies, it doesn't result in a significant problem.
We, I, I get, I get them. I think Zach gets them from my neighborhood.
Not just your neighborhood.
Yeah.
But part of the problem that I, I wonder about is in areas where there are not sidewalks, where people have to walk in the street in order to get from one place to the other if they're walking. If there, if that is taken into consideration, because there would be pedestrians in, in the right-of-way.
Yes.
And even though there may be a speed limit there, a marked speed limit that is, would be normally appropriate in a, say in a residential or side area where you have people who are walking in that right-of-way, are there, are there implications in terms of safety and is that taken into consideration when, when assessments are being made?
Yes, and that's part of, when we go through your transportation system plan and evaluate, we look at what streets don't meet your current standards. And your current standards for local streets or collectors would have sidewalks and bike lanes and would have kind of a cross-section of improvements. And so, we typically identify those streets that need to be improved. But I think what you're getting at is there's vulnerable users. When you don't have a sidewalk and you're walking next to 25 mile an hour traffic, it feels, it doesn't feel comfortable. And so that's probably where some of the complaints are beginning. But when we do our development studies or we do your TSP, those are, we are looking for those type of facilities where you have higher speeds and, but you have a desire for people to walk and bike on those roads. And we identify and prioritize your streets with those types of characteristics to make sure we're getting those improved as quickly as possible.
So would those show up in our report? That these are particular areas that either need to have walker bike lanes identified in order to, you know, if we're going to have a 25 mile an hour zone on a residential street where there is no sidewalk to walk on, then perhaps the alternative is to stripe that so that there is a walking lane or something?
Correct, and that's what, yeah, that's.
Would that come out in the monitoring report?
Yeah, I think that's something you can look into. We're going to have access to that cellphone data, like Scott was saying. That will also provide some pet and bike routes in the city. So we'll be able to pull up and see where are people walking and biking in the city in addition to driving. So that's some new data we'll have access to. And we can take a look at that and see how that looks compared to what facilities are available. Maybe there's people walking a certain route all the time, but there's insufficient sidewalk or buffer from traffic on those routes. And we can kind of highlight those areas if that's what we're seeing in the data.
I think from a global standpoint, where we have existing deficiencies, that's all identified in our transportation system plan and our bike and pedestrian improvements and how those get funded. Safety's at the top of the list. I think level of service would be right under that. So we're aware of where those areas are. And you're know, because you live in Charbonneau, I think you're specifically, and I used to live there too, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well.
There's a plan to address those issues. It's just a question of funding and priority.
Right. And I'm thinking, you know, particularly Boons, or French Prairie, which is the city, the city street where there are no sidewalks through most of that area.
Right.
So we know that there are people that are walking and we have runners that are running. And they do it all day long. So.
At night.
At night, uh-huh. Oh yeah, I had them waving at me the other night, like when I'm walking, I'm going by. This couple is running at night, at like nine o'clock at night on French Prairie in my direction, you know, I mean, they're coming towards me, waving at me like, "Slow down."
As a rehabilitated runner, I can tell you that you always know where the off-ramp is.
Well, I, I think they're, you know, I think if they're in our, in our plan and as long as we're monitoring and, and, because I get those questions all the time. And I think that the other thing is that there now is a movement in, on French Prairie to request that one lane in each direction be designated as a bike and a ped lane. And that there doesn't need to be two lanes in each direction in that area, which just, it creates more speed. And it, it, it is a safety issue. So I think that, that will be something that comes up. So that is of concerns for the people that, that I hear from most. But I do need, and I know Zach, you want to respond to this, but I, before you do, I, I just want to say, I spent probably close to 40 minutes on the phone with one of our residents, not, not in Charbonneau, but a resident in Wilsonville general. And the complaint was traffic. And she was going to move back to Silverton because of the traffic in Wilsonville. She'd been here, what, from the time that there was one stoplight in this, in this city and she was gonna, she was getting out of here. And after I went through the 40 minutes, I said, "Well, can you tell me where the problems are that you think, you know, the issues are?" And she says, "Well, I-5." I said, "Well, okay."
Moving to Silverton would solve that problem.
I know, I know. So Zach.
I just, yeah, Zach Weigle, the engineer, I just wanted to add that there is actually a project in the TSP for French Prairie Road to improve pedestrian and bike facilities along the entire length. It is what the manager of Cosgrove mentioned, it's about. And it is, and it's exactly that, taking one lane away in each direction.
Well, there'd be a lot of support for that, I will tell you. Thank you.
I just wanted to add on to what Scott had mentioned. The, the speed studies that we do, they really are probably 90, 95% of them, there is not, it is perception that the speeds are within the posted limits. When we do find an area that's speeding, that, that information's really helpful. We add that to a list for further evaluation. And then every couple of years, we do spot improvement projects around the city to help with those speeding issues.
Well, I do really appreciate the city being responsive when, when we get calls about this. And some of, some of them are just difficult. So we have a comment from Council President Oquaro, and then we'll move on to our last item.
Thank you, I'll make it really quick. As you were talking about the bike ped and kind of monitoring some of those routes and what's being used, one thing did pop into my mind. If we're using cellphone data to measure some of this, that might not capture all of the youth bike ped traffic. And so I wonder if, if there's some physical counts that are being taken for, for some of those behaviors too? Or some, or, or what's the workaround, I guess, for, for some of that, I guess?
I believe SMART has a program where they've had volunteers go out and, and collect counts, ped bike counts, like twice a year, maybe once a year. I'm not sure. I think that might have.
Twice, yeah.
Twice, yeah. I'm not sure when the last count was done. I, I think it might have been suspended for a year or two.
Right.
So maybe they picked it back up. But we'll take a look and reach out to people at SMART and see if we can get that data to kind of supplement that. Because yeah, like you said, no single data sources has everything.
Right.
We'll try to fill in the blanks where we can.
Perfect.
Signals also, we can pull ped and bike volumes from that.
Right.
Right? And we'll, we'll collect counts at intersections from our, to go along with the vehicle counts. We'll, we'll get ped bike counts from those too, but, yeah.
Does anybody know the average age that kids get cell phones in?
No, it's getting younger and younger and younger.
Now a babysitter.
I was going to say 10, but.
No, it's less than that.
Six or seven.
Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate this report. We look forward to seeing more. And we'll now move to our last item on this agenda, code revisions relating to code enforcement with our Assistant City Attorney, Ryan Adams. And we say, I think you can take a little bit more than, we can go a little after 6:05, right?
Oh yeah. The swearing in is at 6:30, so you really have 35 minutes. Well, good evening. I realize that I am the only thing standing between you all in a very historical moment tonight. So I think we can move fairly quickly through this. My name is Ryan Adams. I'm the Assistant City Attorney. And I want to talk a little bit tonight about code revisions relating to code enforcement. So really, I'm going to cover some background, some historical stuff we've dealt with, at least over the last two and a half years that I've been, been here. And from what I've heard that, that predated me, I want to talk through some policy issues with you. We're not here to necessarily recommend anything. We want to present some information and then get feedback from you all, whether you think it's necessary to go forward and if so, how you would like to do it. And we'll talk about what those next steps look like to the extent that you choose to move forward on this. So our code, Wilsonville City Code 1.012, really is the enforcement mechanism that most offenses in our code fall under. And what that basically says is that there's a $500 fine per offense, so you can go up to $500. Prior to 2007, it was $250. So 2007 is the last time that that's been updated. And what we've, what we've done is in 2018, we hired a code compliance specialist. And most of you all know David Valenzuela. He's like the Andy Griffith of town. He does a great job. And I think he could probably double as the Secretary of State if he wanted to, based on his diplomatic skills. So he does a great job. Unfortunately, he's sort of limited by the code in what he can do. There's no provision in our code that gives him any enforcement authority whatsoever. And so you, you may have noticed in the staff report I mentioned, we had an issue come up a couple of weeks ago where Mr. Valenzuela needed to issue a citation and the code didn't give him the authority to do it. And so I ended up signing the citation based on the authority that Amanda and I have as, as attorneys. And so it, it's, it's an issue that comes up rather frequently. And obviously, the city tries to avoid issuing citations to the extent we can. What we really try to do is share information and get compliance just by talking to people. And so David does a really good job at that. Unfortunately, sometimes a citation is necessary. And so the way that the code's set up right now, we have 11 staff members and believe it or not, one counselor that can issue citations. And it is the counselor that's in charge of parks. I'm not sure who that is. So if you all know, that would be news to me. But that was, that was put into our code, I think, in 1988. So it's been a little while.
We don't know about that either.
If a counselor's issuing citations, I think we may have bigger issues. So that's, that's kind of a background of, of where we're at with it. An issue that's come up and some of you, I'm not going to get into, we have some outstanding issues, but one issue that I will discuss briefly, some of you may remember the Camping World issue that we had. And a lot of times what comes up is certain businesses, maybe national businesses, will violate the code. And I'll call it like an economic breach. And so what they'll do is they'll know, maybe I can get more money for advertising if I violate a certain provision of our code, then I'll end up paying a fine. Because our code is, is frankly, $500 maybe per day doesn't cover, you know, a penalty wouldn't cover the amount of money that they might make. And so that's become an issue. And so as you remember from Camping World, we ended up going into Circuit Court and getting an injunction on that and limited it that way. There are other routes to do it. And so, you know, in addition to, you know, fines not being tailored to offenses, our appeals process is, is disjointed. So for instance, in the building code, an appeal of the building code violation from a building official would first go to the city manager and then it would go to the Board of Appeals that you all appoint, which I'm not aware that we have. So there's, there's some disjointed, there's some disjointed stuff there. And appeals from industrial pre-treatment violations would come to you all. Our Public Works Department does a fantastic job with that and you guys don't see a lot of appeals. And so generally, when a citation is issued for a violation of the city code, it will, it will go into our municipal court. The appeal from a municipal court violation is straight into Circuit Court. It's what's called a de novo appeal. And that's a really fancy word for just saying you get a brand-new trial in Circuit Court. So that's sort of the background of where we're at right now. The policy issues that I want to discuss with you is, is what other jurisdictions are doing. And we researched, I believe I looked at 12 different jurisdictions, one county and then 11 different cities. And the majority of those jurisdictions vest their authority for code enforcement to the city manager. And randomly enough, we actually do that in our charter for the City of Wilsonville. It says that our city manager has ultimate responsibility to enforce the code, but our code doesn't go any further than that. And so what a lot of cities have done is they've said, "Okay, city manager has enforcement authority and he can delegate to the members of staff who would be most appropriate to enforce that provision of the code." Now, obviously, I don't think we want Mr. Cosgrove going around and issuing citations, but I mean, certainly he could.
He doesn't want to.
Certainly, maybe he could get together with the council member that's in charge of parks to, to do that one day. But, so that's what a lot of cities have done. McMinnville, for example, has a, what we would call a sliding scale, right? They have, you know, the prior violations are taken into effect, the gravity and magnitude, whether it was intentional, and then whether or not the individual that is the violator is cooperative. And so what they'll do is they'll say, "Hey, this is a situation that really warrants maybe a $25 fine or maybe up to $5,000 or somewhere in there based on the, the gravity of the violation and some other elements that are, that are appropriate there." So with that being said, to the extent that council would want to move forward or think that there may be a need, we would propose that, you know, we could draft some revisions, bring them back to you all for a couple of work sessions in February and March. And then to the extent we got an ordinance that, that worked for you all, we would do the first and second reading April and May, and then 30 days later in May or June, that would, that would take effect. So that's what a timeline would look like. If you would like the Office of the City Attorney to explore some different options, we'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to entertain and answer as best I can any questions that you all might have.
And while you're thinking about those questions, I'd just like to say from my perspective, because we've gone through a few of these infractions since I've been here, that the criteria that you've laid out, to me, I mean, we have our municipal court judge here. I think the more we can make our fine, you know, reasonable, logical and defensible, the better off we are. So I think the criteria that you have put together now, to me, makes a lot of sense.
And I'd be, I'd be remiss before we go to questions if I didn't say that chapter, my mind just went blank, I think it's Chapter 9 is our building code. So Chapter 9 has this structure in place. And so when I say that our code maybe isn't congruent from one to another, it's a mishmash of different councils over, over decades. And so some, some parts are different than others. Ms. Galhanman, when she was here as the Assistant City Attorney, went through and amended Chapter 9 and it is basically a sliding scale. And so that, that is attached as an exhibit to your staff report, if you'd like to take a look at that later on.
I, I think the example that was in the exhibit on the building code was really, I mean, it hit, it hit the points that I would have been concerned about that have to do with notice, due process, a dismissal of, of, of cases and, and appeals. And I think it, it was really well done. It would be really nice if it was uniform across all of our, and, and similar, so that our citizens also did not have to, because there are some stipulations in here about process that they have to follow in an appeal. And if those are very different in different areas, it's very confusing for, for our citizens to then, it's very easy for them to, to slip up and, and then miss out on, on a fair process. So I think it's a grand idea. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I'd like to see it be more organized and consistent. And, but I, I think that sounds like a really good project that's well worthwhile and that it would serve the citizens in our community.
Okay, I, I concur with that. And I think the more consistency, the better and the shorter conversations we would have with some people.
And I'll, I'll just note that.
And I'll just note that I'm in total agreement. I think consistency and consolidation completely makes sense. Just so you're all aware and to manage expectations, for the industrial pre-treatment enforcement, any changes we make to our code in the industrial pre-treatment has to go through DEQ. So generally, we don't like to touch it unless we absolutely have to, but I will say the industrial pre-treatment program and the enforcement is very good. It has templates that I would actually recommend that we use across the board. And similarly, with our building code, that is somewhat dictated. Why we have a Board of Appeals is because the state building code division requires us to have that. So there may be some places where we need to call out a distinction, but I think being clear about what that distinction is and where it is, we can do that. We can make that happen in the code update.
Yeah, I think that there, at least from some of the other circumstances, I think statute or rules dictate that we function as a Board of Appeals, and in others, it doesn't, it's silent. So, you know, at first I thought, well, wouldn't it be great if we just had one single section for all of our code that said, here's what the penalty appeals, you know, all of that process would be? But I don't, it doesn't look like that's possible to do.
Well, we've got a good calendar laid out here, and I know, I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We met your 6:05 estimated time.
Mayor, if I could just make a comment. This is Mr. Adams' final meeting with us, probably the last presentation he will make to our city council, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for his time here, and excellent work for the City of Wilsonville, and wish him the very best in his new position in Sherwood as their city attorney.
Thank you all. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with Wilsonville, so.
So just to fill in the blanks, do you want to just tell about your position briefly, your new position?
Sure. As of last Tuesday evening, we signed a contract over Sherwood. I'll be the city attorney over there starting on January the 30th, so I'm very excited. I think it's a great fit. And as the traffic folks alluded to, we have a lot in common. So, you know, we have water, we have broadband, we have some issues with traffic, and so this isn't necessarily goodbye. We'll be working together. Amanda and I will still be in communication, and I think it's going to be good for both cities. So I want to say again, thank you all very much for the opportunity. It's been very enjoyable. You are in great hands with Amanda, and I've mentioned this before, but you need to do everything you can to keep her on, so.
Congratulations, and thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Now that he gave you this great big job to do, that's unfortunate.
He'll have his own jobs over in Sherwood.
So that concludes our work session, so we'll adjourn the work session, and at 6:30, we'll gather for our swearing-in.
We're going to start over, okay. Welcome everyone and thank you for joining us at the City of Wilsonville for the swearing in of our two new councilors. I'm Mayor Julie Fitzgerald and I am very honored to introduce Judge Winehouse who's going to do the swearing in and then we'll hear some comments from our new city councilors. Thank you.
Carolyn? If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Carolyn Berry.
I Carolyn Berry.
The undersigned.
The undersigned.
Having been elected to the office of Wilsonville City Councilor.
Having been elected to the office of Wilsonville Councilor.
On oath, depose and say.
On oath, depose and say.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the rules.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're great, you're on the team. Team player.
Thank you.
There's one more.
Oh, your handwriting's nice. Sign a good character.
Okay, now this one.
Thank you. Second hand again, thank you.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Katie Dunwell, the undersigned.
I Katie Dunwell, the undersigned.
Having been elected to the office of Wilsonville City Councilor.
Having been elected to the office of Wilsonville City Councilor.
On oath, depose and say.
On oath, depose and say.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will.
Oh yes. There we go.
There's one more.
All right.
This one.
All right, thank you. There you go. Do I get to keep the pen?
It's up to the city. You can have it.
Thank you Judge. I was waiting till she sits down.
Well, thank you Judge Winehouse for the gracious swearing in and it's a really important time for our city to welcome two excellent new city councilors. And both Carolyn Berry and Katie Dunwell are really involved, dedicated citizens that bring to us a lot of background and expertise and probably one of the best things that I think each of them bring is a deep interest in working toward excellent quality of life in Wilsonville for all of the people who live here, the people who work here, and the people who play here. So we're just really glad to have you as a member of members of our council now. And what I'd like to do now is ask each of them to say a few words and we'll go in alphabetical order and start with Councilor Berry.
Well, thank you Mayor Fitzgerald. I'm really thrilled to be here. I want first of all to start by wishing everybody a really happy New Year and that we have prosperous and healthy year ahead. I want to offer my gratitude to my family, my friends, colleagues, everybody that supported me and encouraged me and cast their vote for me. I'm just so grateful for the trust and the confidence that's been given to me and the opportunity to get to serve as the Wilsonville City Councilor. I appreciate our outstanding past city council. There's been such great dedication and leadership that there's big shoes to kind of step into, but I'm excited to be here and to try. I'm pleased to know that there's an outstanding working relationship between the staff, the city manager, the city councilor, and I look forward to working with the council and the staff and everybody, all our citizens and our business leaders. I'm really pleased that Wilsonville is an inclusive city and that we welcome everybody. I look forward to trying to do my best to serve the City of Wilsonville and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you Councilor Berry and now I'd like to welcome Councilor Dunwell.
Great, thank you. Running for city council was not on my bucket list and once I realized what an amazing city I lived in and how special the people are and the opportunities and the challenges ahead of us, I realized that by serving in any way and first of all in the DRB that I had an opportunity to be a part of the future and also follow the legacy of my family. My parents both served their community in their later years. And it was as I had the opportunity once I was elected to begin to look at all of the different groups because we go through an orientation period post prior to serving and post-election. What I saw was the passion, the tenure, the dedication of all of the individuals as city employees. And let's face it, when you're working at a city, often you're unseen and these are really special people and to be able to be a part of this group as a city council and help shape this future is one of the greatest honors I've ever had in my life. So thank you all for, you know, supporting me, for voting for me. Thank you all to all of the other city councilors for all of the cheering along the way. And most of all, thank you to my husband who I asked, I said, "You don't need to be involved," but he was my biggest cheerleader throughout the process and all of my family and friends and my great campaign team. But most of all, thank you to all of you that live in Wilsonville because you are her future. So I appreciate it. Thanks again.
Once again, congratulations to Councilor Katie Dunwell and Councilor Carolyn Berry. We're now going to break, have a little break and enjoy some refreshments and we will re-adjourn for the next round. for our city council, reconvene for her city council meeting at 7:00 PM. So let's enjoy some refreshments, thank you.
Good evening. I am calling to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on Monday, January 5th, 2023 at 7:02 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Barry.
Here.
Counselor Linville.
Here.
Counselor President Ockerwall.
Here.
Counselor Dunwell.
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here. Will you please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel President Ockerwall, may I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. I have a couple of items under Mayor's Business. And we haven't had too many of our normal meetings since we last met. But I did want to note that the Wilsonville Civics Academy classes are well underway. I've been hearing people really enjoying a lot of great content there. And next week, all of the city councilors will be part of one of the sessions for Civics Academy. So we look forward to that. And coming up, I just wanted to let the councilors know that we have a meeting of the Washington County Coordinating Committee and also the Washington County Mayors. And there is a meeting of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee that I actually attended recently. We have another meeting coming up. And our next city council meeting is going to be on another Thursday as tonight because of the Martin Luther King Junior holiday. So our next meeting will be Thursday, January 19th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. We don't have any items on the agenda for communications, okay? So that will bring us to our citizens' input, part of our agenda. And this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you'd like to participate in this part of the meeting with input via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know you'd like to provide comments. So looking at the cards, I have a card from Tristan Rowland. And is he, if you'd like to come forward, Mr. Rowland, and we have your address on file.
Okay. Hi, Counsel. I am a resident. I live near Memorial Park. I'm 18. That's about it. I have come here today to brief you on my concerns with the Wilsonville Division of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. I will not specify, so I have been under routine harassment from them, being routinely pulled over while on walks and routinely called names and insults that I will not specify. I will also not provide any detailed information on these encounters because they are currently being investigated by the Professional Standards Division of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Let me explain how I've gotten into this situation. I have a mental disorder. It is called bipolar disorder. This means I can go into heightened states called manic or hypomanic episodes. My condition is severe enough that I sit in times experience psychosis. I was in neither state when I had these encounters, but was in a heightened state for want of a better phrase. I made, when they insulted me, I did respond to them and made maybe ironic musings about their behavior. But I must admit, you know, on my side, verbal provocation is unkind and unprofessional, but it is not illegal. The officers I encountered or deputies I encountered behaved as if there was physical provocation, which would be a cause for them to apprehend me if there was. This threat of violence on the part of deputies due to some insults uttered is dangerous, irresponsible, and if they were to attack me, which a year ago I came very close to being attacked, one marched on me with a baton and threatened to, I'm not going to say what he said. And that would be illegal. My question to each of you is, what will you do about this situation? I know this is quite out of your jurisdiction in many ways, but I'm deeply, I generally don't trust politicians, but I feel that I may have cause to trust you guys. And I am worried about the safety of my family and myself. So the question is, what will you do about this situation?
Well, Tristan, first of all, I'm very sorry for your, about this experience that you just described and the multiple experiences that you alluded to. And this is the first I've heard of it. And I'm, I'm pretty sure the other councilors wouldn't have been able to know about this before now. So what, what we will do is ask the city manager and the police chief to inform us of this as this goes. You say it's under investigation, so there are certain things to, to do about that process as that process goes forward, but...
I may put in, with a very serious case regarding someone else.
Okay.
I did make an FBI report.
Okay.
So there may be federal investigation into this.
So we will find out about that, and we want to respect the investigation as it goes through. So there's, you know, when, when is the time for us to get that information? And, and hear from the police chief and the city manager, who is, you know, the direct supervisor and with the assistant city manager of our police. When we know more, I think we would want to have a, a report on that and find out what they recommend.
I can give you one specific detail. I am gay. And I, the names I've been called are always, many times regarding that. So that's, that's as specific as I'm going to get.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you very much coming to tell us about this. And thank you for understanding that it's new information to us and we are, I know that our council does not, you know, support anything like that. And in fact, we don't want to have any, you know, we want to actively prevent anything like that from ever happening.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening and thank you very much for coming to see us.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that will go to our next speaker. And we have one speaker who's in the room and one speaker who is on Zoom. And the next, I think I'll call the speaker who's in the room Mitch Cooper. And we have your address on file, so you don't have to read it, but if you'd state your name, please.
Yes, this one? Hello. My name is Mitch Cooper and good evening. My wife and I have lived, lived in Wilsonville for 32 years and we love it here. I attended a meeting here last night about the Frog Pond East and South developments. I'm both surprised and alarmed to have learned that the city of Wilsonville has not implemented any requirements for developers of these new neighborhoods to utilize only electric power in these homes, including for heating and cooling. Climate change is an existential threat. Reducing the carbon footprint from energy use in our homes is the single highest impact that an individual can make to reduce the threat of climate change. Recognizing the urgency, the Inflation Reduction Act was passed by Congress and signed into law by President Biden on August 16th last year, dedicates $391 billion to energy and climate change, including a tax credit to offset up to 30% of the installation costs for residential solar power, a new solar power system. It has never been less expensive to add solar to a home, even your home. Former Governor Kate Brown signed Executive Order 17-20 on November 6th of 2017, which directs the Building Codes Division to quote, "conduct code amendment of the state building code to require all newly constructed buildings will be ready for the installation of solar panels and related technologies by October 1st of 2020 for residential structures." The next paragraph in that executive order directs the Building Codes Division to quote, "conduct code amendment of the state building code to require that parking structures for all newly constructed residential and commercial buildings are ready to support the installation of at least a Level 2 EV charger by October 1st, 2022." We'll all see dozens of new electric vehicles introduced over the next few years. It's my understanding that the city of Wilsonville, for the most part, borrows the standards established by the Oregon Building Code Division. It's also my understanding from last night's meeting that building code amendments for the Frog Pond East and South neighborhoods will be considered over the next several months. We have a tremendous opportunity to build homes in these and other Wilsonville neighborhoods that will not be heated or cooled by harmful fossil fuels. I implore you, the leaders of our city, to take the necessary steps to help ensure our better future by mandating that these new homes be powered solely by electricity and to deny the use of natural gas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was exactly three minutes. Thank you for the information. And would you, I don't know if you've already done this, but if you wouldn't mind giving your testimony in writing to the city recorder, then we could have that. Thank you. So now we're ready for our third speaker, Cynthia Russell, who is...
Bill by audio.
Audio. So we'll hear her speaking soon. And I do have her address on record. So if you just state your name, Ms. Russell, when you're ready.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, works fine.
Okay. I am Cynthia Russell. I believe I've met most of you at this point. I'm echoing a lot of what Mitch has just said. We had a Civics Academy 2.0 session yesterday evening where we met with Dan Pauley and Georgia McAllister to learn about and discuss the Frog Pond East and South master plan. And during the meeting, Mitch had asked about the consideration of making the new construction electric only. And the response we received was that consideration was not given to this. Like it, it sounded like it wasn't considered at all, but that there is still a possibility to make it happen. So I'm also here to advocate for that. And as I'm sure you're all aware, we are very much in a climate crisis right now. So any feasible opportunities we have to reduce our emissions, I believe we should take. I know Wilsonville is in the process of creating a climate action plan with Clackamas County. So requiring electric only hookups for new construction seems like it would flow right into that. Additionally, Eugene and Milwaukee are cities in Oregon that have already passed bans on natural gas hookups in new construction and city-owned buildings. So Wilsonville can add their name to that list if they are, you know, seriously interested in doing so. And since Frog Pond is a significantly large housing development, you know, one of the new ones that's going up, it's a great opportunity to do this. I do know that housing costs are important to consider, especially these days. So it's important to think about all of that. But if there is a reduction of costs with no installation of gas hookups, which would mean no future cost of switching out appliances for electric only, since we are steadily and surely moving to the electric route, those are savings that should be factored in. And electric continues to become cheaper and come from more sustainable sources. It's already more sustainable. I, I live in Wilsonville. I am a homeowner in the Villaboa area, and I'm also very concerned about the state of the climate. I'm always on the lookout for ways to advocate for a cleaner and sustainable way to live. You know, not, not everything is sustainable when it comes to being greener, but doing something like electric only in new construction, it, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. So I hope that the city will seriously consider making a change to the master plan. And being a leader on that front, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much, Cynthia. And appreciate the comments. Those are some technical, technical areas that I don't have an answer for at the moment, but we've taken your, your information and we will discuss it at a later meeting. Thank you very much. So that brings us to, is that all we have for citizen input? Okay. Appreciate you coming to the meeting and also to the Frog Pond discussion the prior night and taking the time to share these points of view. So that brings us to counselor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements from our councilors. And we'll start with Counsel President Ockerwall.
Thank you. This last week, I, I was able to attend the new lecture series that we have, the Lehan Lectures that we've announced at the council meeting before, which, oh, excellent. Look at that. I've got a visual prop and I didn't even know it. So the first one has happened. And so if you weren't there on January 3rd, you missed the first one. But I, I did see that there were recordings being made. So, okay. So it sounds like a recording will be available. The room was absolutely packed. So if you plan on going to the 17th or the February 7th or the 21st, probably get there early. I think it was absolutely packed because there's interest in this, in, in our city's history. And former Counsel Lehan does such an excellent job in explaining that information and took several questions from the audience to have some dialogue at the end, too. It's important for us all to understand our history in the city. So that was a fun, fun thing and there's more to come. Also, I wanted to announce, I think it was, we're already on Thursday. So it was this week, I believe, the library announced that they're doing a teen art contest right now at the library and taking submissions. The theme for it is Find Your Voice. And I believe more information can be found on the Wilsonville Library's social media pages as well as the website. But that's kind of a fun activity to engage some of the youth in our community. So Find Your Voice, eight and a half by 11, any open interpretation of that theme. Find Your Voice. I think that's an important one for the, the council to perhaps support as well with our community members. So I wanted to mention that. And that is it for me for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just really wanted to remind our citizens that tomorrow, January 6th, is the deadline for comments to be submitted to ODOT on the tolling project. It is being represented as a, in a, in a, in a way that might not appear as if it is just general comments about the impact of tolling. So I encourage all of our citizens to go onto the city of Wilsonville website. It comes up on the rotating notices and you just click on that to take the ODOT survey. It says the, you know, it says it's a regional mobility project. And that is, that's ODOT language to, that they're using for those particular projects, I think, as they look at different aspects. But very important for our citizens to, to, to respond and be part of that survey. But very important for our citizens to, to respond and be part of that survey. I will, I have a couple, actually I have three. Since our last meeting, I have not attended any meetings at, and I have no reports of anys.
It was the holidays.
Which was really kind of nice. But before our next meeting, I will attend the C4 Metro Subcommittee meeting on the 18th of January. On the 19th, the Clackamas Workforce Partnership Board meeting. And then I am going to attend the State of Workforce Breakfast on the 25th, which will be in northwest Portland at 7:30 in the morning, which, for us retired people, is really early, so. But I'm looking forward to the opportunity to be there, so it should be actually a very good presentation on the state of the workforce, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, councillor Linville. Councillor Berry.
Thank you. I also attended on Tuesday night Charlotte Lehan's presentation for the History of Wilsonville, and it was a full house, and she did an awesome job presenting from, you know, ancient times to up to current times that I, I really highly recommend everybody attending her next presentations. And then last night, I attended the Civic Academy 2.0 presentation on the Frog Pond East and South, and that was also a really good presentation, so that's what I've been doing this week.
Very good. Thank you. Councillor Dunwell.
Thank you, mayor. When, I spoke a little earlier about going through orientation to, to several individuals, and I wanted to speak specifically, even though as a new city councillor, I don't have any events that I've attended, but, but I did go to Charlotte Lehan's Great Lecture Series, too. There were a lot of us there. But more specifically, I want to speak and call out our Parks and Rec Department. When you go through orientation, you get to meet so many, so many departments and so many people in rapid succession. I hope that the City of Wilsonville citizens really take an opportunity to take a deep dive in all that our Parks and Rec Department do for our city and for our citizens. It is, it is such an unmeasurable value to our, not only our youth, which is what you typically think of with Parks and Rec, but to our seniors, anything from yoga to their lunch program, to all of the things that they offer in the community center. And they really touched my heart during the orientation, and I'm extremely excited about getting to work with them as a city councillor.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you. I know they'll be glad to hear that. So that brings us to our consent agenda, and I would request the city attorney read the agenda, please.
Resolution number 3019, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement contract amendment with OTAC Inc. for construction engineering services for the Fifth Street/Kinsman Road Extension Project, capital improvement project numbers 1139, 2099, and 4196. Resolution number 3029, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Emory &amp; Sons Construction Group LLC for construction of the 2022 Street Maintenance Project, capital improvement project numbers 4014, 4118, and 4717. Resolution number 3033, a resolution of the City of, the, of the City, Wilsonville City Council amending the Community Enhancement Grant Program Intergovernmental Agreement between Metro and the City of Wilsonville to accept community investment fees, diversity, equity, and inclusion cultural calendar, and minutes of the December 19, 2022 city council meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your honour, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favour, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to new business, and if the city attorney would read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 3028, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving the City of Wilsonville flag policy.
Thank you.
President.
So we're going to start with a staff report. So this is one of these crossover topics where we've spent some time on this before. You'll get a summary from our city attorney and then have a chance to adopt a new ordinance.
Amanda Guile Hinman, city attorney. So tonight, you will have before you two items. I'm going to present on both of them twice, basically. I have to do that for the public hearing process, so it's going to sound a little bit redundant, but the first part is going to be specifically on the flag policy, which is what the resolution that you're looking at tonight is about, and the second is an ordinance to amend our code. So starting off with the background, we're, with the presentation outline, I'll go over the background, and I'm going to give a little bit more detail, since we have some new councillors, about how we've arrived here today. And then I'm going to go over the specific policy and code revisions. Again, for this part of the presentation, I'll focus more on the flag policy, give a little bit more detail, and then the code revisions, I'll sort of provide a high-level overview, and then for the ordinance, public hearing, I'll give some more detail at that time, and then we'll talk about next steps. So the background of how we got here, this really kicked off with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Strategic Plan that was adopted by the council in July of 2022. So one of the strategic action items in that plan was for visual representation and specifically called out flags on city property. So that's what really started the process of looking at a flag policy. But in addition, in early 2022, the United States Supreme Court issued a decision out of Boston specifically regarding flags displayed on city flag poles. And in that case, what they found was, in particular, because there was no specific policy outlining what was or was not allowed on a city flag, they determined that that was a free speech, a forum for free speech on their flag poles, and so they needed to allow basically any flag that people requested be put up. So one of the things that came out of that, that a lot of cities have done, is develop flag policies that identify city flag poles as a place for government speech, where government gets to decide what's put up on their flag poles, rather than a forum for free speech. The third reason that we're here tonight is with regard to Wilsonville Code Section 6.150. That's what the ordinance is going to address a little bit later tonight. That portion specifically is with regard to banners and what banners can go up on particularly our streetlights, and, and it's really in reference to large special events. So because that, of that reference, we also have developed an internal banner policy. We've had that around in our Public Works Department, I think, since about 2011, but it is an internal policy. It's not something that's readily available to the public, so it made sense, from a logistical standpoint, that it be incorporated into this flag policy, so we can talk about city poles more generally. And then finally, in December of 2021, the League of Oregon Cities published a guide for cities on developing these flag policies, which was a really good resource to use to develop the draft policy that's before you tonight. So as we worked through this flag policy, since it really originated from the DEI Strategic Plan, we, I did three work sessions with the DEI Committee on working through what this flag policy and the code amendment would look like, and at their December meeting, they recommended approval of the flag policy and adoption of the code amendments that you're seeing tonight. We've also had two work sessions with council, also discussing these updates to both the flag, developing the flag policy and the updates to the code. So getting into the details of the proposed flag policy, there are seven sections to it. The first section is the general purpose statement, and it particularly identifies that this is coming out of that DEI Strategic Plan. Sections two and three are governed by federal and state law, so really, those are what they are. They're, they're codifying what's already, what we're already required to do under, under those laws. Section four, we put in, just in case someday we develop an official city flag, that it would mirror basically the same regulations that you see for federal and state flags. And then section five and six are really the meat of what this flag policy is about. So section five governs commemorative flags that we may want to put up on our city flag pole, and it treats them specifically as government speech, where only city council has the authority to decide what goes on that pole. And the request for putting something up on a commemorative flag up can only come from the city manager, a member of the council, or one of our boards or committees. So again, it's, it's keeping it within the government as far as the request and then the approval. So then we get to section six, and that covers the banners, so that's what's, when I was talking about the internal banner policy, it basically takes that internal banner, banner policy, and that's what section six of the flag policy is. Again, it's limited to government speech. That was something that came out during the work session of making sure that we were being consistent in how we were using our flag poles and also our streetlights, essentially, and that it would be limited, as we'll see in the code revision, to large special events that are sponsored by, that are city events are sponsored by the city. The final section is section seven on the authority to amend, and basically, except for, you know, changes to federal or state law that would implicate sections two or three, any amendments to the flag policy will have to be by council. Otherwise, the city manager has the authority to change the flag policy if state or federal law changes. The flag policy does not apply to Villebois. Villebois has its own separate master sign and wayfinding plan, so this, this doesn't regulate that. And Charbonneau banners that are not, not currently using city poles, this also does not apply to that, and, and anything, any banner or flag that you see that's not on a, on city personal, meaning, personal, I mean, a flag pole, personal or real property, meaning the land, those would not be governed by this policy. So it's specifically with regard to city flag poles, city, city property, city streetlights, the like. So again, I'm just going to really high level on the proposed revisions here, because we'll get to the code here, because we'll get more into that in the public hearing, but basically what we're doing is we're synchronizing the code with this flag policy by making the banners only, being, you're only being able to put up banners on city streetlights for city-sponsored events, and also that banner policy that's referenced in 6.150 is now going to be codified in the flag policy. So next steps, this is, it's a little off, because one is a resolution and one is an ordinance, and ordinance requires two readings, so we will have our second reading, assuming passage tonight on first reading. The ordinance second reading will be at the next meeting on January 19th, and so they can both be implemented at the same time, for, I should say, for the public's information. Ordinances generally do not go into effect until 30 days after their second reading, passage on their second reading. So to make sure that they both come into effect at the same time, they are written to have an effective date for both of them of March 1, 2023, so it'll be beyond the 30 days, a clean start date for both of them at the same time. So I'm happy to answer questions about either the flag policy or the ordinance, but I would maybe encourage you to save any ordinance questions for when we get to the public hearing, since that's specifically about the amendments to the ordinance.
So this is a chance for clarifying questions to the city attorney about this topic. Anyone have any? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. So I'm going to go ahead with the hearing.
No, this one isn't a hearing, so this one is just your motion and discussion standard process. The public hearing will be the next thing.
That's right. We're just, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 874?
Resolution.
Resolution 30.
3028.
I'm on the wrong one. Oh.
You're on new business, mayor. Resolution.
Oh, sorry about that. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 3028?
I move to approve resolution number 3028.
Second?
I second the motion.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favour, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Now we're going to the public hearing. So I will call to order a...
Mayor, how about I read the ordinance title first?
By title, sorry. Please read the ordinance by title.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 874, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville amending Wilsonville Code Section 6.150, special use of streets and sidewalks and large special events signs and street banners.
I will call to order a legislative hearing to consider on first reading ordinance number 874. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order which they signed, in which they signed up. Then I will ask anyone present in council chambers would like to testify, and then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified, but it would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me, to be addressed by the person who has testified, or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Council deliberates, and I will announce a result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will use, we will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open. So do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, mayor. And again, this is for the public record, since it's part of the public hearing, I'm going to, again, do a shortened version of my presentation that I just went through, so. Let me go back here. Just arrow back. Oops. Stop share. Amanda Guile Hinman, city attorney. Tonight, we are going to be discussing an amendment to Wilsonville Code Section 6.150 with regard to our city flag policy. So again, I'll briefly go over the background, the proposed policy and code revisions, and then next steps. So as a quick background, there was five considerations for what led to both the development of the flag policy and the code amendments that you're seeing tonight. The first and probably the most critical was the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Strategic Plan, which identified visual representation as one of its strategic action items, and as part of that visual representation, it specifically called out flags on city property. There is also a U.S. Supreme Court decision in early 2022 out of Boston that was specifically with regard to the regulation of flags on city flag poles. Third was that, is that our Wilsonville's Code Section 1.6.150 talks about banners being placed on our city's streetlights, and thus necessarily has an implication for the regulation of our, of our poles in, in the city. And in that Section 6.150, it references having a banner policy that our Public Works Department can, currently has as an internal policy, but it made sense to us to consolidate that into this flag policy and these changes that we're, that we're considering tonight. And then finally, in December 2021, the League of Oregon Cities put out a guide to cities on, on how to develop a, a flag policy and gave some examples. We've had three work sessions with the DEI Committee on this, and in December, at their December meeting, they recommended approval of the flag policy and adoption of the code amendments you're considering tonight. We've also had two work sessions with council on this matter. We've also had two work sessions with council on this matter. So just very briefly, the flag policy that you just adopted it by resolution, the key critical parts are in section five, which is the commemorative flags, and section six, which are on the banners. And particularly for this ordinance, section six is the one that is implicated because that's what's being discussed with the large special events. So the flag policy that we've that the council has just adopted or approved does not apply to Villeboise that has its own separate wayfinding plan. It does not apply to Charbonneau banners that are not on city poles, and it does not apply to any flags or banners that are not utilizing city poles or city real property. So getting into the proposed revisions of Wilsonville Code 6.150. Essentially, the big substantive change is in subsection two, where we basically have made it where anyone who has a large special event, which is generally means an event that's going to have more than 250, 250 or more people, or require complex coordination between different agencies or different departments, they're required to apply for certain permits and they're classified as a large special event. They have the ability to have banners put up on city's streetlights. And what we're doing, what we're proposing tonight is amending that to only be for events that are either city or city-sponsored events. And those are basically defined in general as ones where the city's either providing some type of financial or in-kind support for the event and the city, a city logo or some some reference to the city's support is being indicated in that event. The other changes to the code are basically two grammatical changes to make that make sense, that revision make sense with, in particular, section one. So that's the the change that's been made tonight, assuming adoption on first reading. This would come back to the council for a second reading on January 19th. And then to sync up this ordinance and the 30-day, the minimum 30-day effective date with the flag policy, we're recommending that the effective date for both be March 1 of 2023. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Dunwell.
Thank you. I do have a quick question. On city events that are sponsored in kind, is the city also responsible for the installation and removal within the timeframes?
The city is the one that does the installation and removal, yes. And that's part of the reason why we, that was one of the reasons for looking to make it a city-sponsored event, is that only city staff can go on those poles. And so it makes sense that it would be a city or city-sponsored event that would utilize them.
Good question.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions at this time. Do we have anyone wishing to testify? Not in the room and not on Zoom. Does any counselor, I've asked you before, but I'm going to ask you again, does anyone have anything they need clarified regarding the testimony of the speaker? Or the city attorney? We didn't have any speakers. And council has not asked for anything to be clarified. since hearing no further questions and everyone, we have no persons wishing to testify, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 7:47 PM on January 5th.
Hold on for just a second, Mayor.
I can get the phone back up.
Do you have someone wishing to testify?
We've lost our phone connection.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no virtual component right now?
Not currently.
Was there someone, was there somebody wanting to speak on this issue?
No one had raised their hand. Now it's only representative here on the, but I've lost audio.
But prior to?
No one had raised their hand.
Okay. I think we're having technical issues.
I think we're okay, but we should get the audio back up before you get into your.
So do we need to pause to correct that?
That would be lovely.
Pardon?
That would be great.
Is it?
No, it's this.
It's here?
Yes.
Okay.
I just need a minute.
So we're going to have a.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
Okay. So now we're ready to resume the meeting after the technical issues have been cleared Do I have a motion on ordinance number eight, seven, four?
I move to adopt ordinance number eight, seven, four on first reading.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number eight, seven, four on first reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion.
I think Council President Akval.
It's okay.
Okay. We do have some discussion from Council President Akval.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment, and since this wasn't a clarifying question, I held it for discussion. And I just wanted to thank staff's work, of course, on this as well, but also thank our DEI Committee's work on this. They contributed some, a number of things over this last year of their formation, and I appreciate their careful review and the work that they put into this as well. So it's great to see that that group really functioning in in these ways that I think we anticipated and hoped that they would be able to, you know, further the policy that we put together in ways that it's going to serve our entire community. So thank you to their contributions.
Thank you for saying that. And some of the items on the calendar we just approved that were was presented by that DEI Committee might end up on banners for city-sponsored events. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
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 All in, that was five, the motion passes five, zero. Okay.
Just think that was an easy one.
It really was. Okay, so I'd like to ask the city attorney now to read ordinance number eight, seven, two.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we're doing the public hearing for both eight, seven, two and eight, seven, three together. So just for council's reference, the public hearing will be for both of them, but you'll vote separately. You'll need to do separate motions for each of the ordinances. So with that, this is the first reading of ordinance number eight, seven, two, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville annexing approximately 9.17 acres of property located at 9710 Southwest Day Road for development of a warehouse slash manufacturing building and associated site improvements. And this is the first reading of ordinance number eight, seven, three, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the Washington County Future Development 20-acre FD 20 zone to the planned development industrial regionally significant industrial area PDIRS A, RSIA zone on approximately 9.17 acres located at 9710 Southwest Day Road for development of a warehouse slash manufacturing building and associated site improvements.
Thank you. We'll have our staff report.
Mayor, do you, can you read the instructions?
Oh, we're going to do this now.
And call the public hearing to order.
Okay, I call to order the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance number eight, seven, two and eight, seven, three on first reading. Do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing?
No.
No.
Sorry.
I drove by the site just to get a visual the other day. That's.
No.
And I've also driven by it, but that does not qualify as ex parte communication, but thanks for sharing that.
It's good to announce that you visited the site, too.
Yes. Yeah, very good. Have all members familiarized themselves with the application?
Yes.
Yes. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the city council? For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba, based on that issue. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which you believe apply to the decision. City council meetings are now open to the public. This meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing by emailing or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone and notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are, have just been read. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council simply indicating you agree with a prior testimony given by a speaker you identify as is sufficient. At this time, I call for the staff to present the proposal and list the applicable substantive approval criteria. And we'll now hear the planning staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name is Cindy Luxoy, Associate Planner, and I am here tonight to present for your review ordinance numbers eight, seven, two and eight, seven, three, which are an annexation and zone map amendment for the Delta Logistics Site Expansion Project. This is the third annexation and zone map amendment in the Coffee Creek Industrial Area. As required by statute, I would announce that the applicable criteria for ordinance number eight, seven, two are included on page two of the annexation findings in Exhibit C of Attachment One of the council staff report. Review criteria for ordinance eight, seven, three are on page two of the Zone Map Amendment findings in Exhibit B of Attachment Two of the council staff report. As part of adoption of the Coffee Creek Industrial Form-Based Code, the city amended modified procedures governing city council review of annexation and zone map amendment in Coffee Creek. This allows the council review of quasi-judicial annexation where concurrent with a quasi-judicial zone map amendment without prior review or recommendation from the Development Review Board. The Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District allows city council adoption of the annexation and zone map amendment concurrent with or up to 120 days prior to approval of the Stage Two Final Plan Application by the Development Review Board. The Development Review Board public hearing on the Stage Two and Other Project Applications was scheduled for January 23, 2023. However, to provide the applicant time to revise some aspects of their application, the hearing will be rescheduled to February 13, 2023, which is still well within the 120-day window for approval. The property subject to annexation and zone map amendment is comprised of two tax lots outlined and shaded in red on this slide. The property is located south of Southwest Day Road, west of Southwest Boons Ferry Road in the northeastern part of the Coffee Creek Industrial Area, which is outlined in orange on the slide. The area proposed for annexation includes approximately 9.17 acres. The property is contiguous to land currently in the city within the urban growth boundary and master-planned for industrial uses. There are no electors located within the annexation area, and all property owners have consented in writing to the annexation. As a result, council is able to move forward with annexing the property. The proposed zone map amendment is to rezone the 9.17-acre property from Washington County's Future Development 20-acre zone to the city's Planned Development Industrial Regionally Significant Industrial Area zone. The area to be rezoned is outlined in green on this slide. The rezone is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan map designation of industrial and metro's designation of the Coffee Creek Industrial Area as regionally significant industrial area in Title Four of the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. The applications for the Delta Logistics Site Expansion Project are listed on this slide. They include a Stage One Preliminary Plan, Stage Two Final Plan, Site Design Review, Waivers, a Class Three Sign Permit, Type C Tree Removal Plan, Standard SROZ Map Verification, Standard Significant Resource Impact Report Review, and Variance Request. As mentioned earlier in my presentation, the applications were scheduled to be reviewed by the DRB on January 23, 2023. However, at the request of the applicant, that has been rescheduled to February 13, 2023. Based on the information presented, staff recommends approval of the annexation and zone map amendment request for the Delta Logistics Site Expansion Project. And that concludes my presentation tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
The, while I recognize that the council has the authority to approve the the annexation and the zone map amendment, am I understanding this correctly that we are doing this in this order? We've done this before, but but I believe that in previous times that it had to do with meeting the the time, the day requirement to stay within the 120 days from the application. So I'm wondering, why are we doing it this time? Is it that same reason? Or or why would we do this and not wait for the DRB?
Right. So this is a, something unique to Coffee Creek Industrial Area, where specifically we enabled or part of the the process within Coffee Creek and the Form-Based Code is the ability to go to council prior to Development Review Board review. We don't do that elsewhere within the city, but within, at the request of an applicant, we can take the review for the annexation and zone map amendment for to council prior to the DRB. The caveat is. the annexation and zone map amendment to council prior to the DRB. The caveat is that within 120 days of council approving the annexation and zone map amendment, a Stage Two Final Plan for the project has to be reviewed and approved by Development Review Board. Otherwise, if it goes beyond that 120 days, then that negates the annexation and zone map amendment.
I just wonder if when the Form-Based Code was initiated, and maybe you don't have the answer to this, but it sounded as if that ability to go to the council in advance of the review by the DRB was permissive, but I'm wondering if it's now going to be prescriptive, and that that is how it will happen, and we will not have the opportunity to have the DRB do their complete review and approval and recommendation before the council does the zone map amendment and the annexation?
Um, the...what was I gonna say?
While you're mulling it over, I think the whole idea behind the Form-Based Code was to help expedite things, and the applicants understand that they're taking the risk, that they're investing the money and going through the process. So if their DRB application isn't approved for some reason, they've expended time, effort, and energy on the zone change and annexation. So they all understand what the risk is and it means. But the whole idea of Form-Based Code was to expedite things to the greatest extent possible.
Okay.
Within a preset look, and so we spent a lot of time on that so that we know what we're getting.
Right. There's no risk to the city in this.
Uh huh, no.
Okay.
And the other thing that I was gonna say is just that, you know, Development Review Board doesn't approve the annexation and zone map amendment. What they do is they make a recommendation to city council for review and approval of that.
I was gonna add that I believe when we did this Form-Based Code, which was several years ago.
Yes.
It was also a strategy that can help us look more attractive for industrial development.
Correct.
So you could look, if you're looking where to build, you could look at a number of cities, and this one or those that have this might be easier, an easier lift, because we already...you already know going into it what is gonna be allowed. We're not gonna have a whole bunch of different things.
And the push was from the development community, specifically from industrial builders, that they knew that Coffee Creek had a lot of potential, and they were looking for ways to invest in Wilsonville. And that really was a collaborative process. It was a long process, but it was a very collaborative process to finally get to yes on that.
You mean yes on the Form-Based Code?
On the Form-Based Code, yeah.
And I was just gonna ask another question about that. It seems like we have, as you said, this is, I think, our third development using the Form-Based Code. And I notice in this one, while it's not under our purview for these particular two decisions, in each...I believe in each of the cases, there have been requests for exceptions and variances on that code, and that at some point, we were going to review that again to determine whether that's...so that's...I recognize that it's not...
That's a good point.
That it's not part of what our decision is, but I think it does need to...maybe we're at the place where we need to relook at it.
And we did know that in advance, that there were some tweaks would probably be necessary over time.
Exactly, correct. The other aspect of being able to, you know, separate the annexation and zone map amendment from the rest of the review is that within Coffee Creek, there's the ability to have the project reviewed as a Class II administrative review rather than go to Development Review Board. And a Class II administrative review does not involve a recommendation from Development Review Board. So there was that need to make that separation as well. The instance where they're able to have it reviewed as a Class II administrative review is when there are no waiver requests involved in it, and they are following or complying with all of the standards in the Clear and Objective Code.
Your point is well taken, though.
Yeah, and I was also gonna say, we will be bringing back, or we will be coming to council with a summary and an evaluation of these projects that have now gone through. As you pointed out, we now have a third project, and that's the point at which we will be reevaluating and seeing if there maybe are some changes that we want to make to the Form-Based Code, you know, based on what the waivers are that are requested and whether those should be tweaked to make it even easier, you know, to develop.
Is that already on the schedule?
I believe...I'm not sure.
I talked to Chris about...I don't know if it's on any formal calendar, but I can follow up with him.
Because I'd like to know if we want to put it on...let's find out at the next meeting if we have it scheduled.
Okay.
The other...also, that evaluation will also be helpful as we look at the Salt Creek and what type of code we want to develop or we want to adopt to guide development in that area as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the planning staff?
Nope.
Any questions of the city...any comments from the city attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening. This is...I am Lee Layton. On behalf of the applicant, I'm a planner with the McKenzie Firm in Portland at 1515 Southeast Water Avenue, Suite 100, zip 97214. It's a pleasure to see you again. If I look familiar, it's because I and the McKenzie Firm have been closely involved with the other two projects that have come in for annexation and are...one of them, the development is completed. Oh, sorry. And the other is now under construction, and we're very glad to see those moving forward, and we're hoping to see this one move forward, too. I feel like my colleague Cindy is gonna be working on my report card pretty soon when it comes to the waiver issues and so on. And I wouldn't...we simply wanted to introduce ourselves. Also, Igor Nichaporchik from Delta Logistics, who is the firm's project manager, is here with me this evening. We're here in case you had any questions for us. But I agree with everything your staff has said about the structure of the regulations in Coffee Creek. My firm does a lot of work in industrial, like shovel-ready readiness studies for competitiveness and attracting traded sector employers. And Wilsonville has made itself very attractive by reducing some of the delays and uncertainties and procedural risks and things like that. And you're seeing the fruits of it now. It's taken a long time, but the work that the city has done is clearly bearing fruit and producing good spaces for employers to become resident in Wilsonville, and we're glad to be part of that process. But the annexation and the zone change is essentially the application of the city's own policy that it has already established some years ago. And the approval criteria, which Cindy didn't dwell on, but they refer to, is the infrastructure adequate or will it be made adequate through the development process? And the answer across the board is yes. Everything is in position and capable of handling this development. So I agree with your city manager that there's no risk to the city in taking this action tonight. The big show, if you will, will be what we're working through issues with staff on at the Development Review Board, and we hope to bring yet another very attractive project to the city. With that, I just wanted to introduce us and offer to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Well, thank you for that information. I don't see any questions at this point from the council. And do we have any members of the audience or anyone on Zoom or audio?
Doesn't look like it, Mayor.
So hearing no further questions and everyone having testified, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 8:13 PM on January 5. It is now...let's see. We're gonna go to the next ordinance now?
So the public hearing was for both of them. So now you can have deliberations, but when it comes time to do the actual motion, they need to be...you need to do 872 and then 873.
Mm-hmm. So this is where I ask you guys for comments over and over. So does anyone have any comments about either of these ordinances?
Oh, I have my light on. Your Honor, I don't see any reason, from my perspective, that we would not approve the...either of the two ordinances. And I think it's appropriate under our current policy that we move these items forward and then let the DRB take care of the issues that have to do with approval of any exceptions and waivers.
Councilor Dunwell.
I'd like to also just make a comment that the continued development of the Coffee Creek industrial area is so important to the future of Wilsonville. So similar to Councilor Linville, I do support moving forward with this.
Great. All right. I will also comment that it was really good to hear from the developer's perspective that in comparison to maybe some other sites, this did present some...this Form-Based Code does present some appeal, which I think was what our council wanted to do. So that's good to know. So hearing no further question or no further discussion, I call for a vote on ordinance number 872.
We need a motion.
Call for a motion on 872 on first reading.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 872 on first reading.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5 to 0. May I have a motion on 873 on first reading?
Your Honor, I will move to...I move to adopt ordinance number 873 on first reading.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5 to 0. So I think that brings us to city managers' business.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a lot tonight. I would like to officially welcome our new...two new elected officials. And I can say, in 27 years of doing this, I've never had an all-female council. So this is a first for me, too. And I want to remind you that you are set to appear before your citizens' academy on the 12th. I think you've all received that notice. And I think you know that you have each 10 minutes, and you can do with that 10 minutes whatever you choose. If you need...if you want to do a PowerPoint presentation, you can bring it in on a thumb drive or work with Zo. We're just wanting you to know that whatever you need, just let us know, and we can help out anyway. And I don't know if Councilor Akervall, having gone through it a few times...I think everyone does it a little bit differently. Some people talk about why they ran for office, give a little bit of their bio. So if you have questions, you can reach out to the mayor, Councilor Linville, and Councilor Akervall, and maybe they can give you some pointers. You will enjoy this one. This is the largest one we've had, I believe, 35. And they're all very energetic, active, and engaged, and they will keep you on your toes. So have fun. And if you've already sat through the history of Wilsonville, you will get to hear it again, because Councilor X...a former counselor, Leehan, will be there to do that same presentation. Other than that, I just want to say thank you very much for your comments on the Parks Department. I had the pleasure of, with Ms. Troha, celebrating with that department. They had recently received some awards, but they are a very innovative, fun department. They really care about how the city operates in terms of our parks and rec, and they all go...they're just a great team. So thank you for those comments, and I will make sure that Gina passes those along to Chris Ammerman. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. I do have one more question for you on the civics academy presentations.
Yes.
That 10 minutes?
Yes.
Because you mentioned how active the group is, should...to keep us on time, should we plan...I'm thinking it would be good to plan for Q and A. So your 10 minutes maybe includes some Q and A?
It's built into the...to the 10 minutes or built into the time?
Agenda.
To the agenda. So you get 10 minutes to talk, right?
Okay.
Or mime. Whenever you decide you want stand-up comedy, I'm not limiting on what you can do with this group. You do whatever you want. You have 10 minutes, and then they will have a little time to ask each of you questions if they so choose.
Got it. So it's after all the presentations?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any legal business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let the council know that for the...on the prohibited camping project that we've been working on, that the go-live for the community survey on Let's Talk Wilsonville will be up before Monday, and it will run through Sunday, February 5. So we will be putting out information, social media blast, all of that to get community feedback. We're also working on our stakeholder interviews and surveys as well. And another shout-out to the DEI Committee. When I was there in December to talk about the flag policy, I also went over our strategy for reaching out to the community, and since we have to do it in such a short amount of time, they gave some great advice for our outreach. And so really appreciate their input and feedback on the outreach, outside of my comfort zone, what I normally do. So, yeah, so be looking for that survey to come out.
Very good. I'm going to adjourn the meeting and reminding everybody that we will reconvene for an urban renewal meeting right after this, or convene for something.
I didn't.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:20 PM. So members of the Urban Renewal Agency, do you need a break, or should we start right in?
Just right in.
Okay. I call to order a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency on January 5 at 8:21 PM, and I will ask the agency recorder to call the roll.
Member Barry?
Present.
Member Linville?
Here.
Member Akervall?
Here.
Member Dunwell?
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald?
Here. Could I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the order of agenda.
Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 And this is our section for citizen input. Do we have any persons wishing to testify?
We have no one.
And we've decided I don't have to read that anymore, right?
No, if there's nobody here.
If there's no one here. Will the agency attorney please read the consent agenda?
URA Resolution Number 341, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement contract amendment with OTAC Inc. for construction engineering services for the Fifth Street/Kinsman Road Extension Project, capital improvement project numbers 1139, 2099, and 4196, and minutes of the November 21, 2022 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. The...do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as read?
Your Honor, I move to adopt the URA consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
All second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
And Chair Fitzgerald, before you adjourn the meeting, can I just remind you, I think you have it on your calendar about the goal setting?
Yes.
We are gonna do... We are going to do, did we lock that in? Okay. We're intending to do the Friday night training session at Abella's.
Okay.
So we'll keep you abreast in terms of what the agenda will look like with two new elected officials. There'll probably be parts, team building and training. But if you have any specific training issues that you would like to go over that night, we're blocking out three hours. It doesn't mean we need to spend all three hours. So if you have ideas on things that you would like us to include in that agenda, please forward those to either me or Zo, and we'll make sure that when we're talking to the facilitator that we deal with those accordingly.
Could you restate the dates, please?
And the time?
It'll probably be 6 to 9.
That's the Friday.
6 to 9 Friday, yep. And then Saturday is going to be 9 to, 9 to 4-ish. We typically don't use all that time, but pretty close.
And it's the next day?
The Saturday, yeah.
So just to restate our, the role of the facilitator, is the facilitator will call, I think it's going to be a Zoom call or phone call with each counselor to...
In advance of the goal setting?
Yes.
You should, yes.
Well in advance.
You will have outreach from the facilitator just to set expectations and talk to you about what outcomes you'd like to see, both in terms of the Friday night training and also the Saturday goal setting, yeah.
And really what, you know, this isn't all designed by the facilitator. She's helping us.
Right.
But so we want to set goals for this council to accomplish in the next two years. And so basically, be thinking of things that you think you would really like this council to take on as a priority. And if we all bring 15 things, we're not going to all do all of them. But we'll figure out a way to decide which priorities we're going to really want to work on and develop and bring to fruition. And then the staff take, you know, we work with the staff, and they take those and use that to design their work plans. So we're trying to balance what we do and get some great ideas that probably reflect a lot of, some of the things that our community already has going and some new needs that could be addressed, so.
And we do two-year goal setting. We report back to council quarterly with a report that you'll be, the next one, I think, is February. So we'll report back on how we're doing on the various goals. So if you've gone through goal setting before, you know, it's the smart, you know that smart of, give them to me, because I don't remember all the adjectives.
Specific, measurable, achievable.
Realistic, time-bound.
What's R, though?
Realistic?
Realistic, yeah.
And time-bound.
Time-bound, yes.
But looking forward to hearing what everybody brings to consider.
And if you haven't reviewed the community survey, there's a lot of ripe material in there in terms of, for considerations. And you'll hear from department heads, too. And if you haven't looked at the past, maybe two or three cycles of goals, that might be a source document for you as well.
And will there be, I can't remember, because I've only attended one, is it staff and council, or is it committee, boards and commission people as well?
Friday night, it will just be city council, myself, Amanda, and Ms. Valise. Saturday, it will be the executive team and city council. We do a separate board and commission, city council, training, team-building session, and that will probably be in September, October of 2023.
Okay.
I can't believe we're in 2023, this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we did get information from our last retreat, and we'll include that. That information will go out to council, too, so you can look at that. There's a lot of good information that came out of that last retreat.
And if you, so these goals can be found on the website. And then if anybody wants to explore an idea with staff, they can do that. If you want to find out more about some concept?
Yeah, if you want to give us a call and tease out ideas about potential goals, I think some guy called me and said that he was going to email you about resurrecting the Parks Bond subject. So I know that that's something that I've heard from citizens, but it's really, it's like what you're hearing, what you're seeing, and then there's a lot of original documents that you can look at, too, to go through. And I think instead of you having to do that, we'll just, we'll put together a package of information.
I think that would be good.
And send that out to you.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Chair Fitzgerald.
Oh, the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry. She has one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why don't you have the facilitator be contacted?
We are talking to her next week, yeah. So soon.
The package would help.
We will get you the packet tomorrow? Oh, okay. That's going, wow. That's really responsive, though. We will get it to you, we will get it to you very soon. And we will probably just email you a PDF document. That'd be more efficient. And we could also do hard copy that you could pick up here. You just let us know what your preference is.
The meeting is officially adjourned at 8:29 PM.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
She made it.
So...